This conference will now be recorded.
With the pleasure, a moment of silence? Item number one on the agenda is consider approval of consent agenda item.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Loach?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Item number two on the agenda is request for comments from the public. If we have any comments tonight, just please state your name and address first. You'll have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a friendly little warning so you know to wrap up your comments. Thanks in advance for coming.
Just go ahead and just for notes so the people know. So if they wish to speak on that item number six, which is that public hearing, they'll have an option specifically to speak on that if it's other option items, right?
Yes, so there will be another opportunity for comments specifically regarding the annual budget.
Right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Henry. I live at 1123 South 102nd Terrace. Madam Mayor, council members, I think that we have a very important item on the agenda for this evening, the consideration of requests for qualifications for construction management services. I have a lot of mixed feelings about this situation. Thank you for those of you who reached out and shared your concerns. I know that this is a vital part of how we make a city continue to grow and to run. I also know that $15 million in bond issuance isn't a lot of money to place on the shoulders of the taxpayers and those who pay taxes in the industrial park. I think that's important for us to keep in mind. I worry that although I know that tonight's item number three is going to clarify a lot of what I have had on my mind in terms of a plan, I really feel that we need a clear, well-thought-through plan as we consider this huge chunk of money. I understand that 98th Street needs to be paid for as that improvement begins, but to take on up to and upwards of $23 million in bond issuance over the next 18 months is daunting. We looked and the city of Edwardsville's average age is 37.8, which is not bad. But I know there's a lot of elderly in the community and this tax eventually will fall on their backs. I know that my family's property tax valuation increased despite the lowering of the mill levy. It increased by 11%. We will absorb that, but I'm really close to retirement age. And I'm going to, I thought I was getting rid of a mortgage payment and it frightens me. You know, so many people are bailing out of Wyandotte County and going to other counties that have lower tax rates. So as we consider this, I would just ask you to count the costs, take it very seriously. I know you do, and to be cautious as we responsibly look at what needs to happen for our city. I was also asked by a 90-year-old gentleman on Facebook to say he is not in support of spending this money for those buildings. And he asked that you consider the North End and the public safety for that particular area. Thank you for my time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to give a public comment? Thank you for coming tonight. We'll move on to, oh, you have a few seconds left. We'll move on to item number three, consideration of requests for qualifications for construction management services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. You do have before you tonight a request for qualifications for construction management services. As you'll recall here, over actually a number of years, we have been looking at our facilities, the needs of those facilities. Back in 2017, 18, we conducted a space analysis, age of buildings, future needs, those types of things. And earlier this year, when we were having workshops around priorities that the council wanted to set, again, this concept around our facilities came forward. At our last meeting, we did have our financial advisor come forward to show you a scenario of what could happen around issuing debt, specifically supporting debt for the 98th Street project, supporting debt for facilities, and supporting debt for additional projects, whether those be roads, parks, or others. I think generally what you saw from that was that you could issue up to about $23 million over 18 months and that that would not require any impact to the mill levy that is addressed within our principal and interest payments. So that's a separate area. After we finished that meeting, there was, at our last meeting, there were some discussions around, well, how would we move forward to make decisions around what types of buildings? How much would the buildings be? What would the real debt issuance be? And the consensus of the council to the staff was to come back and bring a request for qualifications for construction management services where your consideration to issue. So we've not taken any actions. This is that request for qualifications. So really what the request for qualifications does is to help us select a firm to make those decisions, even some that were just mentioned here. So what kind of buildings? How big should the buildings be? Timing of buildings, all those kind of structural types of issues, right? I think we are aware that we have old outdated buildings. We're having issues where new roofs, air conditioners, we don't have adequate space for our police fire to operate out of, administrative services, all those types of things. So I won't beat all that up. But we need some assistance in how we make those decisions so that we're making quality decisions going forward. So what this RFQ does, it really breaks down into three phases. Each phase would not continue until the phase before it was completed. And the way we see those three phases is the first phase would basically be an evaluation of options. So again, we've had lots of discussions over the last several years. Well, does it make more sense to build a single building? Does it make more sense to build a building on the north end of the lot or the south end of the lot? Does it make some sense to divide the buildings up into maybe you got police and fire and you renovate the fire station or what do you do, right? The first phase of this is really intended to help us answer those questions and to put some dollars to what those are. So the dollars we've used thus far is a pretty broad estimate, right? It's using numbers that we've gotten over time. Roughly, we're saying $300 square foot for those buildings. That is really higher than what the market is. But again, wanted to be very conservative when we showed you the financial impacts to say, well, what's kind of more towards a worst-case scenario? We all know that those prices are going to change over time and they go up, they go down. But we're in that phase right now of deciding what kind of buildings, what would be the pros and cons of each selection, what are those broad costs? That's really phase one in this process. The second phase, if at the end of that, we decide we wish to build one or more of those facilities or how we want to build those facilities, then you need to select an architect to design those. What we want to make sure is that we have a relationship between the construction manager, who is a contractor, and our architect. Because those two, when they work together, give you a very good price, right? So an architect may say, hey, I'd really like to incorporate arches into these hallways or maybe windows or things of that nature. And it sounds good and it looks good. The construction manager may come back and say, okay, but how are we going to build those arches? How big are those windows are going to be? Have you thought about what might need to be done structurally or how that might impact other decisions in the process? So having those two work together versus a traditional process where you have an architect and then you send it out for the contractor and then the contractor bids it and then you find out for these other changes that you need and you end up with change orders, et cetera. The construction management, and there's different ways, really gives us more input into the process and having them help us select an architect to make sure that the architect and the construction manager are working together. Then the assumption would be the architect would do the design on those buildings, again, in cooperation with the city and the construction manager. And then at some point, you would retain the construction manager to put together the bid documents and everything to build that particular project. We're not making a decision on which projects tonight. We're not making a decision on how much those projects are going to cost. We're not even making decisions on where those will be because we don't have all those answers. What we're asking is to bring in somebody that can help make those decisions. So the cost associated with this, which we won't know until we go out to get construction management, but we've set aside money already in the budget, it's a resetting there, of about $900,000. That's eligible for this. We issued debt to do this several years ago. That money is already there and set aside to do this part. So there's not a budgetary impact at this point. Obviously, sometimes when you build something, there'll be whatever those costs are, we'll incorporate. Again, we know we can spend that amount of money or up to that amount, I'm not saying what we'll spend, without impacting our building. We can stay in that rank. So we're looking to do that. From a process, what we would look at is we would first issue this request for qualifications, right? It's not a bid. What we're saying is, are you interested in being our partner? And do you have the qualifications to be our partner? Because not every contractor would be our, could be our partner. What kind of experience do they have working with municipalities about our types of facilities, right? So a fire station is different than a police station, right? But, but, you know, what kind of qualification do you have? That's really that process. Those would get sent out around the end of the month. They would come back. Right now, we have it established as the September 21st. Those would then need to be reviewed. We would put together a review team, spoken to the mayor about this. So as we've done in the past, we've typically, the mayor will help get a few people together to review it. And it comes from a, you know, a spectrum of people, staffs involved, council may be involved, some of our other commissions, public at large, people that can help make, you know, help us make a good decision on selecting someone. Then we would come back and look at a formal decision sometime in October to actually hire the construction manager. And then that would be for phase one. So we would have a price for that phase and we would move down that. And if we like that phase, we could go to the next phase. And then the very last phase, you really won't be able to have a price until we really have the knowledge of what buildings we're building and what the value, you know, what the cost to build those are. So it's really a multi-phased approach to giving us the knowledge base that we need. I mean, again, we hire auditors for accounting purposes, right? We hire financial advisors to help us with finances. You know, we bring in outside people legally and public safety, et cetera, to help us in our decision-making process. This is one more of those support groups to help us make wise decisions so that we are spending the public's money in the most appropriate way and ensuring that what we're doing is in the interest of it. I'm happy to answer any questions about the RFQ itself or the process.
Does putting out an RFQ cost our city anything? Are we on the hook for anything? At what point does it cost money? Like in the process, at what point are we spending money to move forward?
It would be at the time we would, assuming we would enter into a contract. And that would be, right now, we assume that would not be until October. So it'd have to go through a review process. And that review process would help make determination on what we believe the best firm is. There would be then a negotiated price for those services, service or services, right? That would then come back to the council for a formal act. So nothing can move forward, I mean, nothing from a financial matter could move forward until we come back with a recommendation for the contract and that would have a set price for that. Again, that's two months away.
We went through a real similar process with the parks, with the riverfront park. And that was really exciting. And it's basically, you're throwing out to the public saying, what can you do for us? And, and what creative thing can you put together? And it was really exciting to work with. And like with the park, we've got the design, but we haven't pulled the trigger on the money yet. So at this point in time, we really don't have any out-of-pocket expenses I can think of with the park design. But we have a plan and a strategy and we know what the endpoint looks like. And we know there may be phases to go through. It's part of that financial planning process. So I'd be very much in favor of moving forward with reducing the RFQ.
You know, the park plan's a good example of, again, when we put that selection committee together, and some of you all have served on that rank, and that selection committee, right? We had, we had, there were members of the elected body. We had staff members. We had people from our CPPS board. And we had a representative from the school district, right? Because again, a lot of that was, if you think about parks, a lot of times that's youth-related parts of it, not all of it. So again, I expect that we will have, you know, a group of, again, the mayor and I have spoken about, you know, that probably needs to be five to seven, somewhere in that range. And I, but we don't have to make that decision tonight. We're just really step one in this process, but.
And we, did we already, we already did the needs analysis?
Correct.
So there's not money out of pocket for that?
Correct.
That's, at this point, that's done. At what point in phase one, phase two, and phase three, well, obviously be before phase three, but at what point will we get a honed-in idea of the amount of money? Because tonight, we're not saying, if we go forward with this process, we're not saying 15 million or 20 million or any, 5 million for that matter. We're not saying we're issuing any debt. So at what point are we kind of at that go or don't go?
Yeah, I think, you know, part of that process in phase one is to, you know, we've talked about, again, do you build three individual places? Do you build one? Do you do some combination? Do you remodel versus build new, some of those types of, all of those kind of decisions? And part of the requirements for the construction manager will be to look at each of those and maybe others, they may identify others, and say, why would this be better? Why would this approach be better than the others? Why might this not be as good of an approach, right? So, you know, take this building, if you were going to remodel it, you know, what are the pros or cons of doing that? I mean, are you really getting your money's worth? And part of that then too is to give us cost estimates based on the market pricing at that time. So really on kind of more of a square footage and overall what each one of those options potentially would cost. Probably a range, right? I don't expect it would be, it'll be exactly this amount. But it'll say, this is what we think construction is. You should build contingency in here. You know, here's what we think, here's what the design fees should be. Here's what you should be putting aside for, you know, FF and E, right? I mean, furniture, those kind of things, moving stuff, buying new, I mean, we, there's a lot of. So at the end of phase one, we should be able to say, we want to go down this particular path and we estimate that the costs associated with that decision are in this range. And right, tighten it up. Again, we may pull back in our finance, probably will pull back in our finance. But say, if we did this path and now you run that out on our financial, a financial plan, how does that, what does that do? Whether it's the mill levy or timing or things. Again, when we talk about 18 months, we, we really compacted that to kind of say, could we do this if we wanted to move that fast? Which would probably be as quick as you could do it, quite honestly, probably unlikely.
So up to that point, we would have no money out?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And again, we do have funds already set aside, so to speak, in the bank that was part of a bond, 2019 bond issue that's already set aside specifically for this broad project, right? So we identified that then as a need. And so those funds are already set aside. But as far as us being out of, us actually paying money, obviously, there'll be some money at phase one, you know, once a selection's made. And then relative to the architectural, there'll be architectural fees if we move to that point and make, you know, enter into a contract with an architect, right? And we'll know what those numbers are beforehand. And then the last one would be really the construction of the building. Again, by using a construction management process, you know that number earlier than you do in a typical process where you hire an architect, send bids out, get the bids back in, and then say, oh, well, that's too much and we want to adjust this and modify this. You've kind of done all that at the front end. That's the, that's the benefit of using a construction management. And there's different types of construction management and we'll get into that further. It doesn't really make that much difference as to that construction manager. It's more about the contractual terms. What are they responsible for or not responsible?
Well, Michael, since this is not costing us anything at this moment, why don't we just throw in the North End old EMS building? What would it cost to renovate that for in the future if we ever do put an ambulance up there when the call volume gets to that point? Would that be a?
I think, I think looking at, I mean, I would say, I'm not sure that's the appropriate place, but I think that, I think we, I think we anticipate, and again, through my discussions with the fire chief, at some point, depending on development patterns, a second station would probably be located somewhere in the city. It would not have the administrative components to it, right? But we'd need to be able to support fire EMS type of station. How big should that be? We certainly could include that in the RFQ if that's what the council would like us to do.
I think it wouldn't hurt. And the reason being is we're talking about needing more space for our fire and so that might impact the square footage potentially of the building. I mean, just in, and that's something that I think was a pretty creative suggestion in saying, let's look at the long, long-run picture and the big picture on it.
And we can add that into, and again, evaluation of, and again, there could be options brought forward. So we've selected somebody, we're going through those discussions, right? So we, we've gone through a selection process, we've hired them. They're now meeting with staff and, you know, they're talking about fire, talking about police, they're talking about administration, they're talking to you, they're talking to you of what, what's going on, what's happening economically in the community that's going to make, drive decisions. And so, yeah, I think that's an excellent opportunity to look at that. And we can put that in that RFQ. And again, it may be, we wouldn't engage them, we wouldn't necessarily engage the architecture and the construction at this point, but it puts it into kind of that broad plan and they can give us ideas. But again, they may see ideas from their experiences in other places that said, this is a better combination, you know? You're better off putting the Public Works and Fire Department together. I, you know, I mean, Public Works is part of this as well. I don't know. Or if you're going to do Public Works and Parks maintenance, you, you might want to add this additional storage or these additional components in support of public safety. Where are you going to, where are you going to park maybe some specialized equipment? Those types of things. I mean, you've seen fire towers put, quite honestly, Public Works facilities, right? So I think all of that's on the table for discussions as we go through. But specifically, I'll add that into this, this list of evaluations.
Would they also take in consideration, you know, of the needs for our fire chief and police chief and, you know, what our needs are for city staff? And then any other ideas that we may have in the design or in the thought process with this RFQ? Just would we have, would we have our input besides of looking at our, you know, existing facilities? They also, I mean, they would listen to what we have to say about what our exact needs are for today? Know what our needs are, what we think our needs are in 10 or 15 years?
Absolutely. I mean, we did a space study, right? So, and in that space study, we talked about some of our future needs, right? So we have that as a base document. And I think everything we've heard in our discussions internally, that's a good place to start, right? But yeah, I mean, once they're selected, absolutely, there'll be discussions, again, with, with our department heads, you know? Again, we put in here, you know, we expect that there will be, you know, a couple of meetings at the council level, public level, right? So, because they may come back and say, hey, we've got these three or four things, but maybe, you know, this is a really costly thing. Do you really want us to go down this path right now, right? It's, it's too expensive to build that second fire station. You really want us to go down that path? Give them direction, right? Or, hey, as we look around, we see typical staffing patterns as this and we see you're different than that. Why is that? So yeah, there'll be those kind of discussions individually, right? By departments as well as collectively by the city staff and the elected officials. That's exactly what we, yeah, the better we do at this evaluation phase, the better products we're going to get. The architect, not to take away the architect, I mean, the architect needs that decision. They, you know, if you say, go design me a building, go design me a 50,000-square-foot building. Okay, so they go design you a really nice soccer stadium. You go, oh, by the way, what I really needed was an office building and I needed, you know, a place to park five public works trucks. Well, we got to be able to tell them that. We got to be able to put that in documentation, exactly what we're requesting them to design for us. Or we'll be, you know, all over the artistic page if we don't give them direction. And that's really why this first phase is the most critical. Because quite honestly, at the back end, construction costs are somewhat what the market will be at that time, right? I mean, it's about size and finishes and things, but, but we're not going to alter the market cost for those things. So it's really about, are we making sure we're picking the right projects to do and the right sizes? And it's going to serve our needs, not for a year or two, but absolutely. but absolutely, you know, decades. That's what we have to be looking at.
Mike, I think another thing, if I can, where are you? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I think that we need to make sure that our citizens understand what we're facing here as far as facilities for our people, for our employees, and for our citizenry altogether. I've made a few little notes that I've been kind of working on this one. We, our police department is in a trailer. I'm gonna call it a quadruple wide trailer that was given to us by Leewood. And I think it was put in here in about 2014. And we've been living out of that for that many years, and I think it was 20 years old when we got it. We're paying somewhere in the neighborhood $18,000 a year through the budget on just keeping the lights on in that building. So there's definitely a need for that for our community. It succeeded its practical life. It probably was never meant to be a secure building for a police department anyway. We began renting a small trailer in 2017 to house the chiefs of the fire department and EMT. And I, as I asked him, I think it's less than 600 square feet. And then the, the rent that we paid on that in the last however many years had been $23,400. To have our two chiefs sitting in a little office about the size of this, trying to run a fire department. It's an outdated facility. It's not good for the public to see. I think our police department, our fire department have advanced so much in the last 10 to 15 years that they deserve this. And I think our employees deserve this. The City Hall building here was built probably 60 years ago as a veterinary magazine publishing company. It has outlived its usefulness. It's a flat concrete floor. The roof has been repaired for $100,000. That's not to say that it might not need another $35,000 worth of air conditioning unit put in at any time. So I think that the citizens need to realize this. I do watch, I do read Facebook. I don't post. That would be a suicidal mission, I think, if I posted on Facebook. But I do keep an eye on it. And I think sometimes our public might need to understand the needs for what we really do have down here as a city of our size. So I would like to agree with Chuck Adams that we move on with this RFQ for new facilities for the city. That's what I've got to say. Do you need to have that in the form of a motion?
It was intended, I mean, the way we placed it on here, that you, you could have, I mean, I defer to the mayor to do it as, as a motion, but I will defer to the mayor if that's, that's a chief.
I'd like to make a motion to instruct the city manager to request, or request for qualifications for construction management services.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Item number four, consider ordinance number 1058 adopting the 2022 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City.
I'm gonna go ahead and pass this out to you all as well.
Am I taking what you're taking?
Okay.
So what I'm adding in now is just the information, our previously provided to the city council that just details the changes in the STO and the UPOC for this year. The STO, standard traffic ordinance, and the UPOC Unified Public Ordinance, or Offense Code, excuse me, put together by LKM every year, and what it does essentially standardizes some of these routine violations across the state. Those do not become effective until the individual communities act on them and incorporating them into their ordinances via the process that we've done for a number of years. What we've got before you this evening is the adoption of the 2022 STO update. Not really a whole lot of changes included in that. Those are detailed in that sheet that I handed out to you just now. And again, we're provided to you previously, our local updates to that, which we do every year, are more related to specific speed areas, traffic laws that we've got. So there's nothing really of significance to report from a change in the STO. So if you have questions on that, I would entertain those now.
I, I have one. Chief, my thesis is for you. I was reading through that ordinance and everything. Has anything, I don't think anything has changed with discharging a firearm in the city limits, and that hasn't?
That's in the, in the UPOC. That's not in the STO. So we're not considering the UPOC, the Unified Public Offense Code. That was sent out originally. The mayor had requested that that be pulled for some additional review. And I think we're getting some additional documentation from LKM this week.
Well, right. The one, the one, so to speak, change on the local is the one we've done previously, recall this, which was the speed limit adjustments on 110th Street. So if you recall before, we, in prior years, we've kind of forgot to incorporate that. So this does have that incorporation in it. So there's no change to what the speed limits are and where they begin and end. So you know, if you went and looked at last year's ordinance and this one, that would really be the only change is where the, where the 35 and 45 limits change.
Madam Mayor, make a motion. We adopt ordinance number 1058. And do I have to read that whole paragraph?
No, that's, your motion is fine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Zach, would you be able to make any changes to the ordinances posted on the website so people can?
That's what we typically do whenever we do the STO and UPOC changes, whenever those are both adopted, then we include kind of a, a page for folks to go to that details what those changes are year to year, so they can track them. This is what we do.
Just so, so on the UPOC, what I, what I requested from the league, that one sometimes just gets more, a little more complicated. And so what I've asked them to do is to provide us with a true red line between the 21 and the 22. Because at the very back of both of these, there is a summary of the chapters that changed. And of course, what was handed out to you gives a summary. But sometimes, you know, these things, you're like, okay, but how did it change or where did it change? So I'm hoping that that will give both to, to the council and to the staff just more clarity for you before we entertain that particular item. And I think in the future, if, if possible, we'll just ask if they can't just send red lines. So we don't have to try to go through and redline a version for you. We'll make that request in the future. So hopefully that'll be helpful, that you can see it quickly as to the changes from a year to the year.
Okay. Item number five, consider special event applications in the Bonner Springs Edwardsville area Chamber of Commerce to conduct CMB sales as part of Autumn Fest 2022.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is the CMB special event application that's come from the chamber for Autumn Fest. Last couple of years, Outfield Beer Company has been doing our CMB and beer sales during our Autumn Fest event. They're just kind of significantly understaffed at this point. They're not really taking part in any outside festivals right now. So they weren't able to do it, but the chamber has expressed, expressed interest and turned in an application for those services. Really the only change from how we've conducted it in the past, and some of this may change a little bit as we get closer to the actual event, and we firm up some of the logistics of it. But how it's couched right now is that the beer garden, which always incorporates inside of the community center and the parking lot of the community center, where the bulk of the Autumn Fest has been taking place for the last couple of years. The change this year is that the beer garden would also include that section, that the, the green space, ball diamond, right south of the fire station. We'd put some signage along where the actual beer garden ends, so people know where to wander and where not to wander. That's because one of our attractions, Journey Pro Wrestling, is going to be back. And right now, the plan is for them to hold their event in that south area, south of the fire station, during their portion, which would be from 1:30 to 4 o'clock. The beer sales would be, are asking to be permitted from 1 o'clock until 10 o'clock. Another change we've done for Autumn Fest is rather than have a, you know, quote unquote, Saturday night concert, because we're going to have some music throughout the day. So the latest concert is actually, the latest musical I could probably get out around that 9 o'clock is what we're looking at. So that'll give time for folks to break down and mill around and hang out for a little bit if you're there. But other than that, the only other condition of the specially, or the special event permit that we're requesting on the chamber's behalf is the waiving of the daily fee, which is what we've done typically in the past.
And just for clarification, CMB is cereal malt beverage. For those listening online.
Since it's in the middle of the day, and I don't know if we usually serve alcohol earlier in the day, and a lot of times it's really, really hot, are we going to have shade? I, I just, with people getting a little overheated and maybe consuming alcohol, that could be.
Sure. Yeah, well, that, those are some of the details that we're wanting to firm up as we get closer to the event and the logistics getting worked out. We do typically have, use the chamber, the large chamber tent as kind of a shade tent for volunteers and folks if they need it, and there's some wire over there. So that's what we're planning on doing, at, at the very least for that.
And since it's a long span of time, nine hours, we're looking at, is there a limit on how many drinks you're serving people to make sure we don't have anyone getting fostered next to the kids' bouncy?
Oh, well, I think all the, all the, there, the, the beer garden does not extend over into that, the, the bounce house area. So that's, that's kind of standard practice. And I mean, I guess the same public intoxication laws would be in effect as they were, you know, if it wasn't taking place in a, during a, a community festival. We're also, the, the reason that the, it's the nine hour timeframe is really just to incorporate that kind of middle of the day wrestling event. So right now, the chamber may be there for that, pull back and then come back closer to, to the end of the day to sell to coincide with the, the musical performances later on. So it may not be nine straight hours of alcohol sales. It'll likely be selling during the wrestling. They'll pull back, take a break, and then they'll reset up their tent closer to the musical performances by the community center.
But it might make our Autumn Fest a little bit different.
Zach, do you want to make somebody in place for checking IDs?
That'll be the chamber doing that, running, running, checking the IDs, wristbands, all that.
And the chamber has, in past years, not recent years, handled beer booths, and I believe they've done it at Tiblo Days as well. So it's not completely foreign to them and the process and the, you know, obviously, they have to sign off on all those requirements, but yes.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the special event application for CMB sales from the Bonner Edwardsville Chamber of Commerce for Autumn Fest 2022 and waive the daily fees.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Moving on to item six, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of considering exceeding the revenue neutral rate developed by Wyandotte County for the fiscal year 2023 annual budget and take any necessary actions.
Madam Mayor, make a motion. We move into public hearing for the purpose of considering exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Before we, before we do that, so do, I mean, if it's, start right with the group, kind of a little bit of housekeeping on how we'll kind of structure this. So right now, what we're intending to do is run through the, the staff presentation, turn it over, and then at that point, after the staff presentation, open the public hearing, let the community have an option to weigh in on that, close the public hearing, turn it back to the council after they've had a chance to hear the staff presentation, as well as the comments from the public, and then that way they'll have, you know, be able to hear from, from all parties involved, and then we can make whatever action at the conclusion of that, if that pleases the body, if that's all right.
I'll suspend my motion.
So, tonight is the second year that we have done the revenue neutral rate public hearing, which is the new wrinkle that the state introduced for last year's budget and is continuing into this year's budget. So before we open up the public hearing, again, just a little bit of housekeeping as to exactly what this public hearing is meant to do from, you know, statutory perspective, and then kind of run through, from a staff perspective, what we want to, how we want to set up final budget adoption for that first meeting in September. So Wyandotte County developed the revenue neutral rate using the state formula of 38.69 mils. So the intention of the state legislature is that the revenue neutral rate will generate the same amount of property taxes in the next budget year as it did in the last budget year. Well, we kind of pointed out in presentations throughout the summer and into the fall, there are some deficiencies with that kind of one size fits all formula that the state has assigned. In our instance, specifically, the expiring IRBs, when they re-enter the tax roll, they artificially raise our assessed valuation. It also disincentivizes new residential growth. So whenever a area in the north section of town was rezoned to allow for residential development, rezoned from ag vacant to residential, that, that property value, the assessed valuation also changes. So the revenue neutral rate does not take in any of those factors into account. We calculated a true R and R that did factor in all of that, just to get a more accurate to what would, if we wanted to generate exactly the same amount of property taxes last year for next year, what would that be? And our calculations were about one mil higher. It's about a $90,000 to $100,000 swing that the county would, and the county using the state formula was off. There's still some other factors to consider, which we'll get into in this presentation. But that's just to demonstrate that the R and R as designed has a lot of flaws in it, which is why 99% of the Kansas communities in the state are having this public hearing now and, and around, around this time. What the council has already done in this area is Resolution 2022-10, which we adopted on June 27, which noticed our intent to consider exceeding the R and R. So that did not say that we were going to. All that said was, we are going to consider doing it. And before we do that, we're going to hold a public hearing on this date to hear from concerned members of the public about specifically the revenue neutral rate and the mill levy in, in general. That notice was provided to the county, which was then mailed out to everyone. Again, that's a cost that the city is going to have to bear next year, whereas right now, the county absorbs it and is reimbursed by the state. Next year, Kansas cities will have to, to bear that cost to mail out those notices. But we provided that notice to the county, who provided it to the residents. We noticed the public hearing in the Wyandotte Echo on our city website and our social media channels, as well as the text alert system, which we've been incorporating over the summer. So again, the public hearing, at the end of this, we will not finalize the fiscal year 2023 mill levy. That'll be done during the final budget adoption, which won't happen until after our final bub, public hearing for the budget, which can, which will take place on September 12. So at the end of this meeting, or at the end of the public hearing, I should say, we will, as it relates to the R and R, what we will do is set a maximum that we, again, and not to exceed. That will work into the next agenda item, which is to notice that final public hearing, which will include that maximum. We can always go down from that at the time of the budget adoption. We just can't go over it. So essentially, what the state formula and laws are set up is to, you know, tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them, and tell them what you just told them. So everybody is very well above board as far as the process as it relates to the mill levy, and we're just kind of rolling through that process. So looking at the general fund expenditures, absent of payroll, and this is same information that we provided in the past, some of these numbers have tweaked a little bit, not too incredibly much. So these are areas in the general fund funded through property taxes, as well as several other revenue streams that are funded in the general fund outside of actually paying people and for, for benefits. Contracts, materials and services, equipment, capital outlay, transfers, that's all the kind of areas that we break it out internally in our internal budgeting process. So the, that last row kind of shows the difference between what was adopted in fiscal year 2022 and what's proposed in fiscal year 2023. So the swing from one year to the next is about $145,000, about a 10% increase. Most of that, as you can see in the breakout, is in contracts and material and services. So almost 100% of that change is in those two areas. So let's focus in on those two areas, because those are the biggest areas of increase from one year to the next as it relates to general fund expenditures other than payroll. So we've combined admin court, fire department, public works, police department, and parks in the community center. So that difference in total makes up about $43,035, a 9% increase from one year to the next. In, on the fire side of things, that is more of a, not so much of an increase, but a reorganization of, of the budgeting of the fire and EMS department. It's probably a more accurate reflection of how contracted services shake out for those two departments. Internally, previously, we, we budgeted EMS and, and the fire department as separate entities. Going forward, we've combined Going forward, we've combined that, that was done in the past, so we'd have a kind of more accurate accounting on, you know, what does it take to run an EMS service? That was more bore out of, you know, relatively new service in terms of the city. But in combining those together, it makes more sense, you know, to keep track of them as a single department rather than the two departments. And in doing that, we're just shifting some of these items that it might have been captured in other areas of the budget into contract and services. So that's just the more accurate reflection of those two, those two areas. So that's going to cover things in the fire department, it's things like our medical director costs, office lease payments, things of that nature. The other larger increase in contracts in the general fund is going to be public works. That is largely due to now we know how much it costs for contracted services for the mowing. So when we adopted the budget in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty two, the intention was to add that contracted service to the public works department, but it was kind of nebulous at that time as to, well, what areas are they going to mow and which budget is going to hit all that? But now that we've done it for a year, which really from a from a staffing perspective has been kind of a lifesaver, we would have been, we would have been contracting out for mowing services earlier this year anyway, because there was periods where we had a single public works employee due to some of the turnover and folks leaving and onboarding folks and and all that. So there was a there was a period there at the beginning of the spring where we would have had to contract out for mowing services anyway. So we were grateful to have that already set up, now we know what it costs, and so that's kind of the big increase in public works. Similarly, to the Parks and Community Center, that's that's where some of that increase is poured out of. So that that's the accounting of the forty three thousand dollar increase in contracts. And materials and services. So you'll see you've got a ninety six thousand dollar swing from one year to the next, and fire department and police department make up about seventy two thousand dollars of that. About a third of that in the fire department and the police department alone is just in anticipated increases in gas. So that's just the amount of fuel that we need to put into our vehicles in order to keep them running, is anticipated to go up by that amount. And police department specifically, that one ninety six to two twenty six, that increase is almost half, or that thirty thousand dollar increase, about fifteen thousand dollars of that is gas. Fire department's got a large increase in fuel. I did a little bit of research, so according to AAA, the average cost of gas in in August of twenty twenty one in the Kansas City area was two eighty seven. The average cost of gas that stands right now in the Kansas City area is three forty, so that's just a twenty percent increase right there irrespective of having more people in the vehicles and actually driving. Other increases in the fire side of things, you know, they're anticipating about five thousand dollar increase in medical supplies. They've got some monies built in there for vehicle maintenance, additional training, clothing allowance, and some of that's related to our anticipating staffing model for the fire department through that grant funding. Talk a little bit more about the increase in public works at ten thousand right there, that's all in the street maintenance item, line item in the general fund. So last year, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for street maintenance in the general fund, this year we're budgeting, or twenty twenty three, I should say, we're budgeting fifty thousand dollars. And that's for your more routine fixes, your pothole patches, your, you know, not major street reconstruction, but guys going out and and doing some work on the street, our guys going out doing work on the street. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot of increases of note in the administrative or the parks and the community center area. But that's our accounting of the ninety six thousand dollar swing in materials and services. So the takeaway for that is that people and things cost more now than they did a year ago. So what we did was run through the Bureau Labor Statistics CPI inflation calculator. So what I, I mean, they've got a pretty simple calculator to use to see what the buying power of dollars are from year to year. So I took that that from June twenty twenty one, if we spent one million four hundred and forty eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars, which is the adopted amount for all those areas in the general fund last year, we would have to spend one million five hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred and twenty three dollars for just exactly the same amount of things. That's just, that's factoring in inflation. So another takeaway from that is that our percent increase in the general fund, which is about ten thousand, ten percent in these areas outside of payroll, is rising essentially at the same level as inflation. So we're not, it's, again, people and things cost more, we're not asking to add any major equipment or capital purchases in the into the fiscal year twenty twenty two general fund or twenty, over the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget. There's no additional transfers out of the general fund, there's no major infrastructure projects or equipment purchases, including in the general fund for fiscal year twenty twenty three. So those increases that we're seeing are are essentially commensurate with inflation and just the rise of costs in goods, services, and people. Which kind of brings us to our our mill levy scenario. So what we've got presented now, and I'm going to hand out something, are three scenarios, are kind of our our guideposts, which staff recommendation, we're going to kind of use these and we can, we can augment those and tweak them and get some direction from the council. Yeah, they're all made up. At the conclusion, at the conclusion of the public hearing, we're calling for the public hearing on the twelve. So the only differences in in the in the general fund in all of these scenarios is compensation level. All those numbers that I talked to you about just now earlier, that's the same, those are leveled in all of these different scenarios. So the only thing different in the general fund from a cost perspective, scenario one, two, and three, is employee compensation. So let's let's dig in a little bit to the mill levy scenario comparison. So scenario one is a half mil increase in the debt service. It essentially keeps the mill levy for the general fund stable, reduces it a little bit. But the debt service essentially adds a half a mil. And the reason for that, that we included that as an option, is that our last meeting, the financial advisor laid out scenarios for debt, and the takeaway from that was the city can afford to take on up to twenty three million dollars in debt right now without any changes to the mill levy. If the mill levy were to be, or the debt service was, were to be increased by a half a mil, that would essentially equate to about a million dollars worth of savings over a twenty year period because we'd be able to pay our principal down faster and reduce our interest payments over that amount of time. So if the intention is to to issue additional debt at whatever level, the more we can pay on a principal at the front end is going to be beneficial over the term of that note and result in in savings, you know, kind of flattened out over that period of time. It also includes from a staffing and compensation perspective, a three percent step, which is in keeping with the pay plan, a two percent COLA adjustment, so a cost of living adjustment for all employees of two percent, restructuring of the admin department to add a an additional full time person, which in in looking at at our model right now, it's about a a decision point that that we put a price tag at about, you know, between twenty five and forty thousand, so little, less than half a mil. Be shifting some peoples around, redesignating some duties, things like that, as well as the addition of the grant funded public safety staff for fire and for police. So that's scenario one, half mil increase in debt, general fund remains the same, three percent step, two percent COLA, and the addition of public safety staff. I'm going to pause there real quick, see if there's any questions on scenario one, and I'm going to drink one.
When you're finished with your drink, could you remind us what our current mill levy is, the total mill levy? Then I was just hoping to compare.
It is forty two, about forty two, 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 four, is what it is. It's actually on the the notice that was handed out, forty two, two, nine, eight.
I have a question about, and this might take some research and get back to us on it, if you can let me know. With assessments going up over ten percent and our revenue, property revenue, isn't that about six million? Or is that our total revenue?
That's about total revenue, property tax revenue is about that two point four.
So property tax revenue is two point four million. So about ten percent of that would be over two hundred thousand dollars. So where where is that reflected in the budget? Because it seems like we would be able with the ten percent bump in property assessments, it seems like we would be able to have our debt mill levy at eleven, provide compensation for our employees, and still reduce the mills a chunk, like one or two mil.
So is your question, the the addition, the additional revenue related to the property tax appraisals, the assessed valuations going up, is that not enough to cover compensation adjustments? Raise the debt service mill levy to eleven and but reduce the overall mill levy from one to two mil. The the math on that just doesn't, does it doesn't work. So the essentially the, so back to the, so we're, if we're count, so let's just use those kind of broad numbers from two hundred thousand. And I I, you know, I don't want to say that's for sure, but if we're using that kind of a round figure to look at, the increase in our in material, in material, and everything else other than payroll in the general fund is estimated to grow at a hundred and forty five thousand. So if property tax revenues are going to increase two hundred thousand, all but sixty five, or excuse me, fifty five thousand of that is eaten up by just increases in in these areas.
Can you give me an idea besides gas, what the other materials are, like what else is going up at that rate?
Well, I mean, we've got additional in.
Sure. No, I I understand things are going up, I'm just, when I'm looking at the difference being one thirty one in our revenues, should, we should have about a hundred thousand different, is that all being?
The difference in one thirty, what, so what this, that, I pulled this up because what this table shows isn't the difference in revenue. What it, what this table is saying that what used to cost one point four four eight million in twenty twenty one when we budgeted now costs one point five seven nine in twenty twenty two dollars.
And that difference is one thirty one.
And that, yeah, the difference between that, that, the difference between this number at the bottom, that total for fiscal year twenty twenty two adopted for all the areas that aren't payroll in the general fund, one million four hundred and forty eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars, ran through the Bureau Labor Statistics inflation kind of adjusters, we would need to spend one million five hundred and seventy nine dollars in twenty, five twenty three. That's, that amount has got the same buying power as one point four did last year. So it's inflation, cost for people and things are more than they are, more now than they were when we adopted the budget last year.
Zach, what's your estimate on what how much more personnel costs will be for the for the upcoming year? Because you said this doesn't include personnel costs.
Right, and that's kind of going to be our network, we're
You've got that coming up?
All coming up.
Okay, great, thank you.
So so back to the scenarios, the scenario two, what scenario two does is from, it includes our three percent step and two percent cost of living adjustment as well as the the grant funded staff and the admin restructuring. It reduces the general fund balance or a mill levy about a third of a mil, and it keeps the debt service stable. So again, keeping the debt service the same doesn't really imperil our ability to take on any more debt. We can, we can take on the debt as right now, it's just the difference of how we want to structure debt in the long term. Increasing it to, increasing the debt service to eleven mils results in about a million dollar savings over twenty years. That doesn't mean we can't afford it now, if we wanted to go out for it, it just means that we wouldn't benefit as to that savings over the period of the note. So what scenario two does is a reduction in the overall mil by about a third, resulting in and all coming out of the general fund. So right now, the mill levy is forty two point two nine eight, under scenario two, the mill levy would be forty one point nine five five. Scenario three, the mill levy would be forty one point two two four, or that it essentially a one mil reduction, all of it coming out of the general fund, so about a ninety, ninety thousand dollar reduction. That includes the three percent step, the admin restructuring and the the fire department and and police grant staff, it does not include a cost of living adjustment. And to to your point, Councilmember Adams, the cost of living adjustment essentially equates to, under the staffing model, ninety thousand dollars, so it's a one mil decision. So any other questions before I move on from there?
Zach, for the scenario two, the the debt levy, how does that affect the taxpayers?
So the the debt levy is is part of the overall mill levy that that forty one point nine five five, that's the overall mill levy, which is essentially the tax rate for properties in the city. So that's just part of that overall mill levy. So if we adjust it by, you know, up or down, however many degree, it's going to have some some domino effect on the tax payer, which actually is what the next slide is going to show.
Explain how much, if we did the scenario one where we raised that one third or whatever it is.
It's about a half mil increase.
What effect does that have on a person that has a two hundred thousand dollar house per year?
So that's, again, that's, that would be the exact next slide, so let's get to, let's get to that slide.
That's what I want to see, because I'm telling you right now, the COLA has got to stay.
So here's our scenarios kind of listed in order of of impact to the taxpayer. So if I have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it's valued at two, it prays at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we kept the mill levy the same as it is right now for next year, then my property tax to the city, not to the other taxing entities, but to the city of Edwardville, would be one thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. If we added a half a mil to the debt, that adds about fifteen dollars to my tax bill, my annual tax bill. So in that, then that bracket of of housing value, a mil is worth about thirty dollars a year. And that's going to change depending, obviously, because it's progressive, so it's going to change depending on the value of your of your home. But in in those, in that instance, the value of one mil to a taxpayer who has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house equates to about a thirty dollar difference per year. You know, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it equates to about a twenty, about forty, about forty, for for an entire mil.
Can you say that again loud?
So.
You're, you're really comparing scenario, I mean, I think you go through the scenarios at two fifty. If you did scenario one, tax bills twelve thirty one annually, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Compared to what it is today, and that's fifteen dollars.
Well, not not so much what it is today, but what it would be were, if we were to, if to keep the no levy stable. It's hard to compare one to the other because everybody's property taxes, the county assessed everybody much higher, so it's kind of harder to get that. This is, this is the difference in five or two hundred, five, if my house is valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Edwardville for next year's budget, this is, these are the impacts that I would see on the different mill levies. That's what this graph kind of shows is the difference in, so if we were to reduce a mil or reduce a whole mil and eliminate cost of living adjustments for employees, and I own a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, I would get a about a forty dollar, excuse me, about a thirty dollar reduction in my annual property tax. I would pay thirty dollars less a year.
Versus a thirty dollar.
Versus a fifteen dollar increase if we were to just raise it by half a mill.
And scenario two would save about ten dollars.
Say again, I'm sorry?
Scenario two would save about ten dollars.
Yes. Well, scenario two, yes, yes.
Two big goals.
And again, this is only, this is only concerning the city's portion of the bill. And it does not incorporate any of the other changes, the other taxing entities are doing. This is the only one that we've got. Correct. It's the only area, your, uh, uh, property's tax bill, the city only makes up about twenty-four percent of that total. So this only concerns about a quarter of the total tax bill, um, that the city actually taxes for. If your value went up, there's a process to appeal that. The city's not involved in that process at all. Uh, a lot of new people, not to interrupt, a lot of people have learned about that because since we've noticed all these times and the county said, I know that I fielded a couple of calls about tonight's hearing. Asking, so what, what, what's the process and all that? And so when I walk them through and they say, well, my tax bill still went up, and they look at their appraisals and that's what went up so much. And so how they're aware of the, the.
And that's one thing I was just going to mention too, is not only, are we only in control of, of, of a quarter of it? And that's really important to remember, but also we're only in control of a quarter. And that means if everyone raises a half a mill, that's fifteen dollars to them and 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 fifteen dollars to them. And for someone living on social security, it, it really goes fast. And so while for, for us, like we can just work a little bit extra and make do, it's important to remember the entirety of it, where we're not the only entity that's going to be, um, having these discussions and, and hopefully the other entities can be, um, more responsible with the money. And I know usually it seems to fall heavy on our shoulders, but.
Right. And that, that's kind of the point. And that's, I mean, you're right, people, because things cost more, which is exactly what we're experiencing from, uh, purchasing, you know, our buying power, things cost more. The, uh, inflation, our, our increase in purchasing for twenty twenty-three in the general fund is rising at the same level as increases in inflation. But, but you're correct that for the last number of years, we have been the only entity in Wyandotte County that's been offering any kind of property tax relief. Whereas the others have either raised or stayed stable, we've been consistently reducing, uh, reducing a quarter of individuals' property tax payments. You're right, you used the term kind of shouldering the, the burden of everybody else. That's exactly what we've been doing. The reason that we set the, so these scenarios are set this way is because another factor that we want to consider is, is adhering to our own financial policy. So our own financial policy, obligates us to, I shouldn't say obligate, it calls for us to maintain a fund balance of fifteen to eighteen percent of our general fund expenditures. So that one mill reduction, that's as low as it, and reduction of the cost of living adjustment, that's as low as it gets and still maintains us at a fifteen percent, um, uh, fifteen percent cash reserve essentially in the bank. So anything lower than that would reduce our, um, our, our, our fund balance in the general fund lower than fifteen percent, which is, you know, it's not statutorily required, but it's generally not good practice to go against your own financial policy for a number of different reasons. Um, one of them being bond ratings. If we are going out for debt, it wouldn't be a good idea to also be a violation of our own financial policy.
Can, on this one, I think a, a good way to think about it too, if, if you went with scenario one, we're talking about saving a million dollars in interest over the next twenty years, which that's a chunk of money that, that really gives us some buffer for tax re-increases in the future and, and, and some, uh, some flexibility. And we're talking about a buck a month on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, it is, um, sixty cents a month.
I don't think you can find a house for a hundred and twenty-five thousand in Edwardsville.
Well, let's say a hundred and seventy-five. It's, it's, it's less than a buck a month. And, and you talk about looking forward, taking care of our kids and our grandkids and so forth. That would be a great way to, to really buffer the future on interest expense.
So that's kind of the crux of kind of your guys' decision-making as the governing body at this point, after we give the public an opportunity to weigh in. But in, in the area of tax relief, what's the tact that you want to do? Do you want to do a, a, offer these, uh, what, year-to-year reductions that we've been doing in the last, you know, five to six years pretty consistently? Do we want to continue doing that? Uh, some would argue at the expense of some larger community investments that could be made, could be getting made, but haven't been, uh, or spread out the savings over a longer period of time. And, you know, both tracks are appropriate. It's just a matter of how this governing body wants to, wants to address that.
Zach, you have a chart that shows if we leave our mill levy exactly like it is, forty-two, two ninety-eight, what the, uh, what the revenue, but without the, you know, because it's not in any of these scenarios.
It would be about, so a mill's about ninety thousand. So if I were to, are, is the question what the revenue would be or what we, what would we?
No, what would we still be able to offer staff? I mean, because scenario three is pretty close. I mean, it's really close. We left it, I mean, it's a mill.
So scenario three is the one mill reduction with the elimination of the cost of living adjustment. If that were to be back in place, we would be able to do, uh, uh, scenario two in addition to some, some other areas. And so we can.
What would, what would the scenario be with staying at our mill levy right now, forty-two, two ninety-eight? I mean, I'm talking about.
Uh, effectively two, yeah.
No, I'm talking about increases for the staff, the COLA.
Right.
The reason, the, uh, the debt service fund. What would be scenario four? That's what I'm trying to say.
So scenario four, if we were to raise the mill, just raise it by, or, or, excuse me, keep it, keep it level is what you're asking.
Right.
Then we could raise the debt service. Um, essentially it would be scenario two with some playing around with the, the, the general fund and the debt ratio. We'd be, we'd likely be able to raise our debt service to eleven to, to take advantage of that long-term saving. And then keep our general fund revenue or general fund mill levy round about the same and be able to fund three percent step, two percent COLA, the admin restructuring, all that. So if we kept it level, um, we could, it would open up the ability to, uh, have the debt be at the level where we would incur those savings, but also reduce the general fund to a point where we can still fund these other areas. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. How, how, how much, um, reducing the general fund, what would that percentage or amount do you have on the top of your head? Do you know what that would be?
Well, so it essentially would be a little less than a half mill reduction. If we're increasing the debt to, uh, eleven, which is about point five four, it'd be a little bit less than that on the general fund side of things to keep things level, get the debt up there, uh, to where it needs to be. So it would be about thirty, thirty-one, eight maybe to the general fund.
So just for reference, your, your current, again, from a taxpayer, they, they just get one rate.
Right.
But the, the breakdown is we have to publish it. Our current general fund is thirty-one point eight five six.
Right.
And our debt is ten point four four two to get you to forty-two, two ninety-eight. So effectively under scenario two, you, you could either, if, if you hold it the same, so if you just don't change it, you could increase the debt level a little bit. You could keep them exactly the same. So, so you give a little bit of a mix, but from a, from a public, from a, from a publishing standpoint, to, to give that flexibility, you, you probably would want to keep those two rates as they are today. Because again, you can always adjust down, you can't adjust up once you publish. You could achieve all the things that, that Zach has, has, has put out there. You might put some of those monies back to your reserve, to your general fund reserve and, and use it at a future date for more pothole patching or something like that. But that probably, from a flexibility standpoint, keeping that level the same, then we would, we could work the budget back for it. But we know we can achieve those goals that are there, the step, the COLAs, the restructuring, the grant funded positions. And that assumes we get them, right? And unfortunately, I think we said before, we won't know that until after the budget. Of course, if we don't get those, then we will adjust accordingly, right? We'll, we'll make those adjustments. Uh, but, but we can do that by holding the mill levy. We can achieve those goals if, if that is where we are trying to, to reach.
I was trying to work the math on it. It seems like if we raised the debt to eleven point oh and kept everything, kept the, the overall rate the same, we would be reducing our, um, rate to thirty-two point three one six. Is that accurate?
It could be thirty-one point three.
It'd have to go below thirty.
Or thirty-two point three one six. No, because if we're just going to add a half point to, because I, it's, you know, our debt service is ten point four four two. If we added point four five.
Yeah.
Or four, five, five, four, whatever it is, five, five, to that, that reduces our, you know, it just takes the, the other part of it down a half.
Let, let me make it, let me maybe make a, a suggestion here, right? So, so I mean, so one, we're, we're, I think we're trying to slice the cheese between the bread when we're really thinking about the overall tax rate. I think it's, I, I know we heard our bond presentation and yes, having that rate a little higher will help us pay off that debt earlier. But part of our question is, we're not really certain of when that debt's going to get issued, right? So, um, I, I would probably rather see it stay in the general fund and hold the debt one more year. I mean, if I'm, if I'm slicing between those, uh, I mean, if you hold the mill levy the same as an option, I would leave that in the general fund. I would leave it in the debt service fund. It is likely we won't issue debt, the first piece of debt until early twenty-three. So our first payments are probably going to be in twenty twenty-four. Or I just timing, there may be an interest payment, kind of depends how it gets structured. And the twenty twenty-four budget may be the time that you look at, do you bump at that extra half for the long-term savings? So that's just an option out there. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to hold it the same, it's certainly for publication purposes, and we can come back with scenarios, but for publication purposes and going into the budget, I think trying to figure out tonight, if it's point two eight or point two nine or eight, it would be better to say, we're going to publish it at the current mill levy. That's what we're saying our max, again, talking about maximum levy, right? And, but I think for the good of everybody, we want to, we kind of want to know where we're going. We need to know that as well. That, that would be my suggestion. If you're going to hold it the same, publication purposes, leave it alone and we can come back with the details as part of that budget hearing process.
Uh, yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, it, the broad strokes, yeah, the broad strokes of it. What, what we allowed ourselves in the budget, uh, with resolution twenty-two, ten was that, uh, the maximum mill levy that we included in that resolution, that noticed this public hearing was our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, which is about a mo- one mill increase than what it is now. So we're not, we've not ran through any scenarios where we're increasing the mill by one. That just gave us, that's our max. We don't want to go above what we did in twenty twenty-one. Every intention of going lower than that, and that's what all three of these scenarios do is go lower than what that max was set by that resolution. But, but I guess to answer your question, if we just keep the mill levy stable, we can do everything that's in scenario, that's in scenario one and either rededicate some of that other revenue to, uh, to fund balance or, you know, or move it around to some point where the end number, which is the, the total mill, the total mill that property taxpayers are looking at, you know, that's, the changes there are detailed in that table.
Just, I think that we're, if I'm understanding right in hearing everybody, and I thank you Zach and Mike for putting this together. And I know Zach, you've spent a lot of time on, you can tell that, but I think for median for us planning and thinking about what we're going to do in two or three months, you know, and we've all seen increases across the board and our, in our personalized and, and city just station just let us know too about their increases. I would like for us to look at that scenario one and that half mill or the, the half mill increase. Uh, because Zach understood you're right. And then I think Bishop Block said or mentioned too, was it thirty dollars a household?
Of course, for, depending on the, on which, on what your value is, but yeah. Uh, about fifteen, actually fifteen dollars a year.
Fifteen dollars a year increase. And I realize that's twenty-five percent of, you know, of the tax of a, tax value. I understand that. But, you know, if we think about what we can do for our cities, for our city, for our citizens, and, you know, we can control that twenty-five percent. And I know we can't do anything about the other thirty-five in Wyandotte County, but I think for us, for the citizens, I think it'd be fair, because of all the other increases that we've seen, to look at scenario one and that half mill increase as the max. And then we can go from there as we go into further discussions to see really how that plays in everybody's favor.
And that's the point I was going to kind of pull out of your comments was that we're not setting the max, we're not setting the mill levy at the conclusion of this public hearing. We're just reestablish, reaffirming what the maximum would be. So, uh, one, one strategy could be to notice a public hearing for the twelfth at the one mill or, excuse me, the half mill increase. So that's option one, uh, in the stack that was just handed out. And then if, you know, after some thinking about it, we want to reduce it from there, then we can't, we just can't go over that. So if there's not any other questions at this point, then I would, I would entertain that the, the public hearing be open so we can allow residents to, to weigh in on some of this.
I'd like to resurrect my motion.
Yeah, yeah, most second.
Motion and second will please call them.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Oat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. And Mayor, just for, for those that may speak, it's important if they would make sure to give us their name and, and an address and that direct those comments to the council, right? So that we're keeping it going to the council. And then if there's follow-up question, we have questions back to the staff. We'll be happy to, to answer those, but just for process, I think it works best if they direct the comments to you and we'll go from there.
And I think it is important to, to remember, because it always feels awkward up here that we don't respond. It feels really awkward to, to sit and listen and, and we're, we're listening and we hear, but, um, we, it's, it's not a time that we're able to just respond in person. And hopefully during council comments, we'll be able to respond or, or get some.
Yeah, after the code, after you close the public hearing, or, or, you know, if there's some specific question, we're happy to, to answer those. But just so we don't have various conversations going on, it's just best if they direct them to the mayor council. Then either at the close of the meeting, if you want us to answer specific questions, we certainly can do that.
Did anyone want to give a public comment?
Somebody's got to be first. Um, thanks for that presentation. Actually, I, I think I really even followed that. The only.
Name and address.
Confusion, or I'm sorry, council and mayor. The only confusion I have. Oh, I'm sorry. That's what you're talking about. Heinz Rogers, six fifty, Edwardsville Drive, Edwardville, Kansas six eight one 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 dash eleven forty-six. The only confusion I have is this, uh, memo or this notice that we got from the county, from the state, or I guess the state instigated county report. I don't know what you call this form, but none of those numbers match what's on here for the city portion. That was my only confusion. And I'll ask you, Mayor, if you, if you happen to find an answer.
We can address that.
Because it shows, I'm sorry, it shows on my form, the city's portion, the revenue root neutral was thirty-eight point six nine and the proposed was forty-three, two nine eight.
and the proposed was forty three two nine A. So I don't know where they got it.
And did we want, want to go ahead and address that now or do more? Okay, that would be fine if you're.
Either way. So Mr. Rogers is correct. Thirty eight point six nine O is the revenue neutral rate that, that was assigned by the county. And then that forty three point, whatever number that you, that you noted, that is the, that's the maximum that we noticed. And what that is, is that was in the, yeah, so that was in the, that was in the resolution to exceed the R and R and is the same mill levy as was in fiscal year twenty twenty one. So what we did when we adopted that resolution was say, we're not sure what we want the mill levy to be. We know we don't want it any higher than what it was in fiscal year twenty twenty one. So that was our max. And this is part of my frustration with the state process is because what that notice makes it looks like is that, that is our proposed rate. When, that had never been our proposed rate. That is just our ceiling that we will not go above. So that has caused some confusion as to what do these numbers mean? So that, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion. We close the public hearing, seeing no further comments.
Second.
Motion and second, will the clerk please call roll?
Who got the second? I'm sorry.
Mr. Bishop.
I did, sorry.
He? Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number seven.
So, well, I've got a couple, yeah, this will, this will kind of lead into item number seven as well. So we're kind of tackling these at the same time. What item number seven does is set the maximum spending authority for all of our budgeted funds for public hearing purposes on September twelfth. But before we do that, so now we've yielded resident comments through this process. You've heard the staff presentation. So the city council discussion pointed at this, at this juncture, kind of couched as follows, and this is how I see it. So, you know, again, if you want to take other direction from this, then, you know, this is, that's what this is for. So again, tax relief to the residents is to be provided in current year at the levels that we've talked about, which keeps us in keeping with our own financial policy. Already want to spread out those interest savings over a period of twenty years. From a staffing perspective, what the budget proposals all include are the public safety grant staffing as well as the administrative restructure. So if there's additional staffing or contractual needs that this council wants us to look at or, or changes to some of the models that we've, we've talked about, then now would be the time to tell us. So we've heard in the past from different, you know, community groups and residents that a dedicated person at the cemetery is something that they would want. The fire chief can, can demonstrate the inspection workload at the fire department, more than warrants, at least a contracted position. So from a staffing perspective, what we've got included is an additional full time employee in admin and the grant staffing in the public safety departments. But if there's anything over and above that that you want us to consider before we set our maximum spending authority, now's the time to let us know. And then from a compensation perspective, what we've got in all but scenario three is to provide the two percent cost of living adjustment as well as a three percent COLA, which is about a one mill decision. So if you want to reduce it by one mill and, and keep our fund balance within our own adopted policy, then, then it's at the expense of the cost of living adjustment. So if you want to reduce, that's likely where a ninety thousand dollar reduction is going to come from. KACM did a just community poll over a couple of months in the lead up during the budget presentation, polled forty two communities and they're showing an average cost of living increase for their employees at three point oh six percent. So we're, we're not, you know, that, that ranges from a, a one and a half percent in some communities to eight percent in some communities. So in all the forty two communities that they looked at, it averaged out to three point oh six for cost of living.
Would you mind, Zach, when you come, come back for the next one, if you could average that instead of just this year, since we made some pretty big adjustments over the last twelve to eighteen months, just doing over five years? Like how, how we're, how competitive we are in cost of living adjustments as well as just wages in the last five years to make sure we're on target?
I think we've got some of that material handy. We can have that provided.
I, I, I think, Mayor, to your, to your comment, and I know you, you know, I mean, so change, the upgrades that we made to the compensation plan, while the, the foundations stayed the same, right? Three percent steps, great, you know, step and grade plan, steps are three, grades are five, right? I mean, we didn't, we didn't change that. We expanded it out, which gave the opportunity. We were hiring people oftentimes at steps four or five to be competitive. And then we ran out, you know, in one or two years, we weren't able to, to meet that. I think the plan we have in place is solid. I, I, you know, I, I hear from our department head, I mean, it's a plan, it works, right? And it doesn't need adjustments other than looking at the COLA. The other thing that we did in that, when we did that adjustment, we took some positions that we knew they were way out of the, way low in the market, right? Fire is one of those areas, especially around paramedics, where we did do some adjustments within the plan. So maybe they went from a, you know, an E grade to an F grade or, or things of that. We did, you know, especially around public safety, that's where we had the biggest challenges. So some people may have moved more than a step in the, in the fiscal year because we wanted to make sure we had them in the right place in the market. And we, we can kind of show that demonstration of what we did for, you know, to make sure we were market competitive. You know, that we could, and I, and I think you've seen some of the hires we've had recently. We've been able to do that. We've been able to hire good quality people because we're able to manage at the market. And again, I'll, I'll just say this, and I've said this before. I mean, we're a lot better at our low to mid positions than we are at our high position as it relates to the market. It just is the fact, right? So I'm not saying we can make any changes there, just, that's just where we're at as overall pain. And I think we can come back and show what we've done around those areas to try to help address compensation for staff.
And that's why I didn't just pull out COLA, but specifically because we're looking just in the last year of COLA. I thought, let's see what those folks did in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty.
Yeah. And, and what we find out there in the community, you have, some communities are still using a merit based system and they're doing a one or two percent or three percent merit and then some one or two or three percent COLA. Some are doing step plans, but, you know, so sometimes it's the pay plan they have in place differs from ours. And if you recall, we tried to go, so the cities we brought back were pretty regionally comparable to us. And they also regionally had like pay plan. So we were trying to, as much as possible, compare, so to speak, the apple to apple plan. Every plan's a little bit different, but that's what we tried to make sure we did when we brought that compensation plan back last year.
Another, another factor considering that area too, is some of those are utilizing some of their CARES Act dollars and ARPA funds for, you know, they'll call them COVID bonuses essentially, which is not the strategy that we've, you know, wanted to use for those federal funds because it's just a one time kind of infusion of cash. It's not a really a sustainable flow of revenue. So our tag with that money has essentially been, let's get through this budget. Let's see how much the Wyandotte County is going to award us as part of the, the, those funds. And then once we figure out what that is, then we can kind of structure how we want to use those funds for projects versus regular expenses like payroll.
Zach, on the, I'm going to kind of switch to personnel now. The Public Works Director, his position's already budgeted, correct?
His position's already budgeted, correct.
And have, we have three people that work up there full time?
We have two in the, that is actually out of the general fund. The other is our stormwater, or excuse me, our sewer superintendent, James Haines, he's actually budgeted out of the sewer fund.
Okay, but she's still.
But he's, he's on the crew, yes.
Yeah, okay. And with you, with the people in the office, you want to, you, we need to hire an additional part time person or?
Well, what, we, we, we've talked about the position of city clerk, we'll use that title. There, so it's really being able to ensure as much as anything. So, so some of the functions that Zach is doing, so he's, right, he's doing two different jobs, assistant city manager and city clerk. Broadly, city clerks generally will oversee your front office operations, you know, utility billing, court, those types of things. And of course, they are the record keeper for, for the city, right? That maintains minutes, all, all those things. So, so that's kind of where we're focusing on. We're talking about a little bit around the finance areas of how we address some of our just financing. I mean, again, it's little things like payroll or every, we have one person doing so many different things out there. And as you've heard many times, we need to spread out those duties for lots of audit protection, but just for workload. It just, you know, the workload continues. I mean, it sounds like I'm playing, but just that workload has got us working, you know, lots of extra hours and things like that and things either we're not able to respond in a timely manner. We may not be providing, you know, we may be making mistakes just because we're doing, we're trying to do too many things at the same time in a day. You know, like Zach, I mean, the doorbell, you know, somebody's at the front counter, he has to go up and try to take care of somebody that's doing something because the other person's at lunch and then, you know, I'm calling him, hey, where are we? I need to get this stuff for a council presentation. So it just, that's really what we're looking at in administrative. We had talked about the potential of a, like an administrative intern that would come through a college program. While those are great, they got to be managed. And, and right now, I'm not sure we have the bandwidth to do both. And, and so from a selection standpoint, having that full time administrative person that can help do those functions, take on those functions is really our focus.
And that's a half mill. You're, you're thinking that's about a half mill to bring that person on?
Yes.
That's what it says, I'm just repeating, okay? Chief Mathies, in your department, are you staffed? I mean, I'm sure, I know you, everybody wants more people and everything, but I mean, are you, are you adequately staffed? Are you not counting about the one additional grant guy, person? Just trying to get a feel about how we're doing in the city with employees, you know? Because I know you guys are, you know, I, I know I've seen it done, but I mean, the police department, you guys are, I guess what I'm trying to get at, how much overtime are we spending in the city on police and fire?
Budget, part of the, last year's budget process for the budget we're in now, we actually turned in less money as part of the kind of budget neutral policy that the council set. But so we, we're spending around seventy thousand ish. But we control that as much as we can. You know, if you have that one event that just throws that all front fuel, one day it's three bucks, stays fine. So, so in a sense, are we adequately staffed? We are a hundred percent staffed at our authorized strength as of this year. Part of the cops funded position is to get to us where we needed three. So we have the one, we're a plus one this particular year, authorized by the council, that. And so part of that was, we needed three, we added the one, asking for the cops grant, add the two. And then we will decide from there. We didn't know kind of which way the cost of service, all of the, just demand on the department would, would go. And it's been nothing but increased in twofold. It's just, it's really baffling. And so that third person, if we did an analysis today, which we do every year on our staff, then we would, we would still ask for that third person. That probably won't be until twenty twenty four. That's what we're charging. We want to see what's going to happen with the cops grant. We only asked for one. We thought we'd be the most competitive for that and want to over ask. And that's something we can handle. And then we can reassess our staffing analysis and assessment, which Mayor and I personally got over, we needed those three, we added the one already, we asked for the cops grant, and then we'll reassess again to see what we're, we're a hundred percent staffed at the authorized strength as of today.
Chief Win?
We are a hundred percent staff, authorized by the council of five per day. We also put in for a safer grant, then one more person, person three. We just had, I'll put on one because there are people that go. Same with the police department, we are up forty percent call volume this time, this year to pre pandemic numbers. Now, everybody got scared during pandemic unless they were absolutely dis- dis- hesitating, just the hospitals, nobody wanted to call. We've rebounded plus that, plus fourteen percent so far at the end of last month. The other question, or the other side of your question is, do we need more personnel? This is not the first time that we've heard somebody come in and want to reopen the north station because of the number of emergencies in the north end. And as Mr. Adams had asked last year and by earlier, we round less than six percent of our call volume more than eight thirty two. Given the increase in calls that we've had this year, we are still less than six percent of our call volume more than eight thirty two. Out of that, less than six percent, over sixty percent of that call volume is not EMS related. Most of them are the majority of illegal burns or reported burn or anything else. We also have to manage seven and a half million square feet of stuff to protect. There's three certified standards right now, myself, the deputy chief, and one part of our paramedics. Fire Department Paramedics is only the first level of inspector status. The problem that we have with trying to send engine companies out there with increased call volume is the other day when I did, I earned four and a half hours to inspect five hundred twenty four thousand square feet. Because not only do you have all the warehouse facility, you have ammonia system, you have cooling system, fire suppression system, and everything else. And there are potential opportunities to look at contracting that service out to our provider that we have that does our, our footing inspection. But at what point do we look at where are we breaking even that with what we pay contractors to try? Seven and a half million square feet, do we split it out by how much is a square foot? Or do we split it out for the contractor to do it by the amount of time in the facility? Or do we sit there and go, well, what's it going to cost to do this? And then where do we compare it to, where does it fall out if we want to spend fifty thousand dollars contract out of forty thousand dollars contract out? Fifty four thousand dollars to find a full time respite or overtime? Where do we draw that out and ask the citizens to go and provide to us? Because we have pledged the next nine hours as the year passed for overtime. And earlier this year, if you remember, we were down four positions for Fire Department Paramedics and we ate through overtime because it takes five per day people. Us trying to get these standing grass, go just six people would reduce six overtime, reduce five coverage. But what about eleven percent, we have no angles available in the city? Because we have got double up calls within thirty minutes. And then again, it goes back into, what other future development do you have? Do you have more future numbers of personnel moving in? How do we move in? But if you look at the department response, our EMS responses may a lot of free personal health. We also make a chunk that's almost fifty fifty with the number of employees we have in the defensive department compared to our four five bike down residence. Then all the paying taxes are all served. So we've got several different approaches in, I would never say, I don't think, you're the chief of police, never say we're not going to sit there and say no to have more bodies. But that is still an issue that we can provide information to you guys. You also have to make the determination of where we're going to get.
What was your overtime for this year so far, do you know?
We budgeted sixty thousand dollars for overtime load, so it's a great, I'm surprised.
You're at one oh four. You had seventy two budgeted and they're setting at one oh four. I'm not sure if some of that's, might want to double check allocation, but that's what it shows on your report today.
Yeah, obviously don't forget though, we have a work schedule to where we have built in shift overtime based on their budget work schedule. So for an average employee makes about fifty four hours more to be charged.
Uh, fifty, fifty-four hours a year in overtime. Right. Assuming, yeah, I mean, you know, get right. I mean, so every every firefighter from a from a budget standpoint, we budget automatically fifty-four hours of overtime. So they work their standard schedule. And it doesn't really, even if they, even if they take a day off and they don't get the overtime, but what happens is, right, I got, I got to staff that spot. Sometimes we can use the part-time pool that oftentimes, especially on the paramedics, it's an overtime. So somebody takes a vacation, uh, you know, they're getting paid that vacation time and the only way to fill that is with overtime. It it's a more, it's probably the more challenging of the departments as it relates to overtime.
That's a lot of money, man. That's a lot of money, that's a hundred.
It is a lot of money.
Is there still three that are on a grant now that are going to be coming on paper?
No, we put in for the grant, start. Chief Mathies wrote a state for grant, two thousand seven to two thousand eight, somewhere around, that grant's already, so, and this is three years, that was already expired. That's back when we had staffed three personnel per day, we did provide ALS transport. Or summer of two thousand fourteen, we got two messages. I'm sure how much of the EMS business group I have is about eighty percent of our call volume. And like I said, we're talking about a low percent of it because we have two or annuals in the city because we have both of them valid.
And then speaking of the north station, or the north section town, is response time good?
We had a fire Saturday morning. We were on scene, less than five minutes, time of this, nine-one-one call was logged in. These days is, we were dispatched, the first company was on scene.
There's a good backup plan if the trains on the tracks.
And so far, they launched a train traffic, we're on less than two percent. But we've been compromised on a call because a train has completely stopped off the track. Out of the time we've trapped, we've gone down about three percent total. I would be able to deviate from anything for train. The majority of it, we were sitting less than a minute while the train is going, doing them right back.
All right, that's all I had about that. I was just wanting to see how much overtime and what we were in personnel, you know, that's, that's.
So again, I, this year was a, I I think, a little unique in, because of some of the staffing shortages that we had. I I wouldn't say that's typical, but I would say a typical year, we're, we're, you know, we're certainly in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar per year range in the fire department in a typical year, I think.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we have to pull up one time that we did a, could not get filled with those, everybody in metro and short paramedics, if they rob Peter and pay Paul, and I mean, myself and student manager, we looked at pay, like, how we're changing. And we finally had to come to a agreement, decided, you know, mutual, beautiful place to do it. We just can't keep chasing ninety-three thousand dollar proposed budget, it's low one, pay for paramedic. There is absolutely no way that I'm going to pay for what I'm making, being paramedic to work my days a month. That is not sustainable this week.
I I would say this about, because I know all the time we get on this overtime discussion news. Adding staff doesn't eliminate overtime. I know probably over, right? So so I know sometimes we look and we say, oh, well, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on overtime, if we hired another person, our overtime would go away. It it just doesn't work like that. Now, you might, it might adjust it a little bit. I just, I give that caution because I've had that discussion so many times, like, oh, yeah, we'll just, we'll add a person that'll eliminate the overtime. And then you come back and people go, why is the overtime, you know, significantly lower? Because just as we said, if you hire one employee, you have fifty-four hours of overtime the day you hire them, right, that you got a budget. So it doesn't eliminate it, it may adjust it that.
Each standard employee, they should hire someone, because it's something, we've got two weeks of vacation time, the average of five, six days, you know, those are created and open. Then when you're asking staffs not to solve an overtime issue because we are running non-stop live to add staff, make the service call plans, working, it's one, where we just get that whole balance all across.
Anyways.
Zach, if with with our current rate of mill levy at forty-two point two-nine-eight, I mean, how does that compare like Bonner Springs, Francis, certain the same though we are with unified government and the twenty-five percent? How how do we compare to their their numbers? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I know Bonner Springs has noticed a mill levy that they're, they're doing this exact same process tonight, and I believe theirs is at a forty-two point eight-nine. I know it's slightly more than our current mill levy is right now and is higher than what the maximum that we're proposing as part of this, but the the half mill increase of being the maximum for scenario one, it's more than 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 that. I believe it's for uh, forty-two point eight-nine. I'd have to look and be sure, but I'm fairly certain that's what that is. And I couldn't say for sure on the, on KCK side, I think, I believe theirs is around thirty, thirty-nine, I want to say thirty-eight, thirty-nine, something like that for the KCK.
Since we're talking about compensation and just trying to get creative, since there's not a lot of places to find money to to reduce the mills, since we haven't had a public works director for several months, we haven't been paying comp like his salary or insurance, workman's comp, that sort of thing. Is that money somewhere that we can apply it toward our budget to reduce half a mill?
So that money, so right now for our, for for the purposes here, so what what we're showing right now is that budgeted expenditures in fiscal year twenty twenty-two are coming in a little bit less than what was budgeted largely due to those staffing vacancies that we've had throughout the year. So those, you know, I don't hesitate to call them savings because it's still, it's not money that we're saving, we're just not paying it out. But what that money is incorporated into our, what what we're assuming is that we're going to be right on budget for the year. So that that allows us to be a little bit over in some areas, a little bit under in some areas. But the way things are going, we're, for for estimating purposes, we're estimated to be right on budget, and that incorporates the not paying our public works director for a period of six months. So those, that money that we're saving is incorporated into this year's budget, which affects the end of the year fund balance, which kind of sets up all the other dominos for it. So it's not money we can just like, it's just not sitting there somewhere that we can just pick up and then start using it in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. It's already incorporated into our year-end estimates for this year, which determines the fund, the our estimated fund.
So what, so are you saying we were over budget in other areas? So that was absorbed in where we were over budget then?
Correct. I mean, you just heard the fire, you talked about overtime, fuel has been up, you know, I hate to keep harping on fuel, but fuels, fuel's more expensive. But yeah, there's other areas in the budget where it counteracts that quote unquote savings for being so spare in our public works.
I was trying to find some.
No, I hear you, yeah.
I thought I was getting paid public works director fee too.
I believe that's accurate.
I I mean.
Getting my best.
Yeah. I mean, we're continuing, I mean, it does, it rolls into the, as I said, which then goes into the fund balance, and then you go into next year, right? And and again, we do try to stay at that, you know, at that, that, that level. And as we, as we, I mean, it is a bit of a process that really never ends. This whole budget process never really, really ends, right? I know we adopt a budget and we, then we have reporting and those things. So I mean, we can, we will reassess, you know, based on what we think this mill levy, how will that impact our year in fund balance? And, you know, is that, are we at sixteen percent as an example? Do we have some adjustment there? Or are we really at twelve? And no, we don't want to do it. So, you know, the last year, we we definitely went below where we wanted to be on our, on our fund balance. And when we talk about that, we look at it really at two different times. We look at it as we're budgeting and and then we look at it at the year end when we have real actual numbers. And those typically aren't, I mean, they're generally within one percent or so, it'd better be, but it it won't be the same what we budget to what we end it, you know, when we end twenty twenty-two, that percentage as to expenses to fund balance will probably not be what it was when we budgeted back in August of twenty-one, adopting a budget. So it's just part of the process. But I think we, I I I I know we're, you know, trying to get to this spot. And again, I think, I I would say that that the scenario one that you have before you is the one that gives you the greatest flexibility from a decision-making standpoint. Right? Again, we're not, which is effectively that point five four six adjustment to the mill levy, uh, that not, you know, that won't be, that may or may not be what you finally adopt. That gives you the greatest flexibility for the rest of your discussions to the end of the time. If that's, you know, that if you want something less or adjusted, we.
Yeah, that's a reset our feeling.
We put these together, kind of in in a series of options, and that's, that's the broad, that gives you the broadest spectrum of options.
And so from a, from a action item stemming from this agenda item, you know, we would need to determine what we want to notice for that public hearing and then potentially finalize that via the resolution that's in your guys' package, that's twenty-two eleven, which you'll see in section two. It's just got kind of a placeholder figure for whatever that final will or the the maximum mill levy is going to be. So that's we, that the purpose of this discussion this season, what's our, what's going to be our real ceiling that we're noticing for the purposes of our September twelve public hearing?
So would that be a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two eleven using option one as the high end?
Yeah, so that would be, yeah, author, a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two eleven utilizing the maximum mill levy of forty-two point eight-four-four.
Say option one.
Or option one would be.
I'll make that a motion. We adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eleven using option one as the maximum mill.
Second.
And that is a vote of the governing body, Will.
And that, did Mr. Bishop make the second?
Yes.
That's correct. We have a motion and a second, a little clerk, please, Coler.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Mayor Kayhart?
Yes. I am number eight, city manager report. Mike, did you have anything for us today?
I was just trying to go back to the report to see if there's anything extra, but I do not recall anything additional at this time, but I, well, I I think I would say just public works, I do want to give a kind of a attaboy to to James, who's our, he's our public works supervisor slash wastewater. And of course, you know, we've been doing all stuff and we've had one of our wastewater lift stations, we have a pump rebuild we have to do that's failed, so he's had to come out a couple of times and reset pumps in the middle of the night. And and he's really doing a very good job trying to, you know, keep the teams out there working. If you've been up by the shop, he and I talked, they've really done a lot of cleanup work trying to get some of that, the piles of dirt and other things that were up there that we received several complaints about. And I would like to thank our friends over at Unified Government Public Works who provided for us a dump truck for the use for the day. So they've done that a couple of times. James has a, has a connection that he works with over there, you know, co-worker, I guess. So just really, they're they're doing a good job. They're really trying to tidy up things, get stuff, you know, been a lot of grass and there was that rainy season, and so they've been very responsive handling those things. I did send out to you all, just that there was the request about the, what they call a blow pothole patcher, where they kind of blow the patch in there. Spoke to the public works director of the unified government. You know, they kind of ran what the number would be if we want to hire them to use that. I think we probably need to first make sure what, how much work we have that we would want to do. I'd say I'm not the biggest fan of that particular technology, but but I mean, it's it's a quick pothole patcher. And, you know, you see it arranged, see used on highways a lot of time because you can blow it out, it gets out there, but it has kind of a loose rock feel to it. So some people don't like it because you do get some loose rock around. And then I would just say that we're hopefully, early part of September, we're doing the Schwartz Road project. So those are really all public works things, but just kind of wanted you to have that on your list. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, Zach, did you have anything for us?
One quick update that I neglected to get into the report, but you'll remember when the health department was out, they made reference to a local health officer that was in staffed over at Bonner for a couple of months. I've been in communication with them, and I think we're going to have a similar program set up in Edwardsville here in the next couple of weeks. They've sent me some draft kind of memorandum of understanding documents that I just need to go over and get finalized and see if we can get them stationed over here, so.
Chief Wood?
Other than what's in the report, the, that's on, run tomorrow for FRI, should have been run at the department. Some, as you all may have seen, Facebook posting on Saturday, a week or last week or the week before on Saturday, we had all three, you know, fire department paramedics on shoot at the same time when I hired, so opportunity, some of our previous summer camp kids saw them up there and played some summer camp, cross post, post camp fires. There's just another one selling, one day, summer program.
Thank you. Chief Mathies?
Uh, yeah, the code enforcement officers on vacation this week, but since we last met, there's been three additional force posts. So we, one of our challenged properties, in terms of Schwartz Road, ninety-eight area, we've been dealing with that, there's a force load there as well, so, uh, we're concerned ahead, and we have that communication component that's our first priority. So if we're doing force load, we really got, we're given a fun way in the weeds on these things, you know, we really talk to people or they just ignored it. So I've been very busy, so to show you where we do, we are mowing some property, so I think that was a question from the board.
Thank you. Ms. Dehan, did you have?
No, I have a question.
Councilman Adams?
Chief Wood, and what are, what are you speaking on? What topic are you speaking next week?
My son, this is a fire, I'm taking an order for a review, again, the year we had on the Monday, fire three and a half years ago, how we change our policy or the process of sharing near Mrs. Crossfire Service, so we don't have the same repeating problems occur. Due to the dynamics of that pizza oven, no fun attendance, the way the construction home was, it's one of those oddities that led us to have to ask a lot of frontline coaches to have reviewed that as tactical wise, have other presentations on leadership rules of behavior, for doing the fight.
Excellent. Fantastic. So proud of you having a person of your caliber here that represents our city during those type of things. I really appreciate it. And it was, it's good to have some citizens in the audience tonight. I really appreciate that. It's good. It's encouraging, at least for me personally, to see some interest and people engaged, and that's really what, you know, it's just what we want, is people engaged and active in their city. And who knows, someday someone may sit up here too, you just don't know. So thank you very much. That's all I really have. I appreciate everything, the the presentation, Zach, was outstanding. So thank you very much. Digestible, and that's good.
Councilman Bishop?
Mike, thanks for cleaning up the public workplace. You just made my life a little easier, so. But other than that, I'm just, just thanks for all the work y'all do, you know, put in and then, I saw the guys in action Saturday morning and they did a fine job. I'm a retired battalion chief and I know what a fine job looks like. Our department did a fine job because they had a, they had a knockdown before KCK basically got here. They did a fine job. That's all.
Councilman Malat?
I have to reiterate what Mr. Adams said about the people in the stands, finally. We usually play to an empty house, and it's good to have people really here. And I hope that I enlightened some people on the need for the facilities that I think that a lot of our citizens.